Welcome to the May 28, November 25, State Council meeting, 6:30 PM, State Council Chamber, Merrimack Street, Lowell. Let's start with the prayer.
Amen, God.
Today's session opens. We pray your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be granted this day that we're able to make decisions which mean for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who work to transform our city, making it a better place to live and work. Amen. You join in salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please father roll.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yam.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Gitcher.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Mayor Ruck.
Here. Any more to silence, Sealy? Moving on. Mayor's business, Section 2, 2.1, communication for remote Zoom participation, motion accepted, passed, filed by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Belanger, the fair is say aye, opposed motion passes. 2.2, a proclamation. This week being National DPW Week, May 18th to May 24th. We understand that these are the hottest working employees we have in our city. They are doing yeoman's work every day. They hear from us all the time as far as complaints and what things need to be done, and they are always there to answer the bell. I'd like to pass it off to the assistant say manager Sean Machado to say a few words here, then we'll get to the councils. Mr. Machado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I work closely with a lot of these guys. Sustainability Department is the newest member of the DPW Division. Catherine Moses is an absolute rock star. Got us $21.3 million in grant funding in 2024. She's a crucial role in fostering sustainability practices in our city, and kudos to Catherine and her team. The Engineering Department, I work with quite a bit. They've been shorthanded every year. Last year, we did $11 million in roadway improvements. We started preservation of micro-surfacing, crack seal, fog seal. And each year, they've stepped up since we've been here, and it's a great team, and we're in a great spot with the Engineering Department. Water and wastewater, we just approved a $100 million loan order for water infrastructure improvements. Aaron Fox and his team and Steve DeShane do a great job. Excuse me. The Street Department has closed out three, I'm sorry, 800 3-1-1 complaints on potholes. This winter was terrible on our roads, and they do a great job every day of completing those 3-1-1 request complaints. In the Parks Department, recently, I've been spending a lot of time up at the Parks Department. I'm there early in the morning at 6:30 with the guys, and I feel like that department's moving in the right direction. The morale's up. They're doing a great job. And a big thank you to Paul Saints here, the DPW Commissioner. He's available 24/7, an absolute rock star. His heart has been in the city 100%, and I just want to say thank you to Paul and everybody on your team.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sealy, come up.
Want to say a few words of acknowledgement? Go ahead.
Thanks to everyone here tonight. I can't say enough. Thank you. Just wanted...
Check, check.
There you go.
I just want to thank everyone for the recognition tonight. It's really, it belongs to all of the people here behind me, and so many that are working still through the night, in the 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. They really get it done for us. We've made a lot of strides in the last few years, and that wouldn't have happened without the vision of the administration that's here and the support of the council. So I appreciate the note of thanks, and I look forward to working down the road here. Hopefully, you'll join us. We had to postpone our luncheon, so hopefully you'll be able to make it with us there next week. Thank you.
With that being said, Commissioner, the National Public Works Week, Employee Appreciation Day is now Thursday, May 29th, November 25. Please join all of us in celebrating all the hard-working and dedicated public works employees. That'll be at Shubh Park, 11:30 AM to 2:00 PM, once again, next Thursday, May 29th, 2025. So you have our sincere thanks and gratitude for all the job well done, day in and day out. So we very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to 2.3, we also have a citation. This month is Asian American Pacific Islander, AAPI Harris Month, at the request of the council, roughly Counselor Noon. We are here tonight to honor Pa Hym Kai. Come on up. Ma'asol, Counselor Noon, go ahead. Do a citation first, you got it. Okay, great. We have a citation. Be hereby known to all. The City of Lowell, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Pa Hym Kai. It is with great admiration that we honor this man for his outstanding service to the Kamehameha community within the City of Lowell. For over four decades, he has been a trusted advocate, educator, and leader promoting health awareness, disease prevention, and access to care. His dedication has helped countless individuals make informed decisions about their well-being and has strengthened the overall health of the community. His impact extends well beyond public health. As Chair of the Intergenerational Council and longtime voice of Kamehameha radio and TV, he has worked tirelessly to ensure the experiences and concerns of the community, they are heard and they are respected. His leadership has helped bridge generational divides and preserve the cultural values that bind the Kamehameha community together. A revered elder and cultural steward, Pa Hym has played a vital role in supporting schools, temples, and community organizations. His efforts to promote Kamehameha language and traditions have left a lasting legacy. He is not only a dedicated advocate, but also a symbol of compassion, resilience, and cultural pride. Now therefore, I am in the Denne P. Rook, on behalf of the entire City Council and all the residents of Lowell, hereby extend our deepest gratitude to Pa Hym Kai for his remarkable contributions and unwavering commitment to our Kamehameha community, given this 20th day of May, 2025. Counselor Noon, the floor is yours.
I just want to add a few things that's not on the citation, Mr. Mayor. I've known Bong, elders, the word for elder Bong, Pa Hym Kai, for over three decades. Before that, I was living in Boston. But during those three decades, he's done a lot, as you said, Mr. Mayor. I remember three things that is so important in Lowell, at least that I picked out of it, was the, he's helping, he's advocating for instituting the Kamehameha language as part of Lowell Public School Language Program in Lowell Public School. It still continues to this day. Without his advocacy, it wouldn't happen. He's also working with former superintendent Ed Davis during those years when you have upbeat and crime, gang violence and crime in the city to help reduce crime rate in our city. He's also helped unite the Cambodian Temple. We had some issue a year back, and he brought them together. So those are the three important things, in addition to what you read into the record, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank him because this is the AAPI Heritage Month, recognize someone like him. There are a few others in the communities who have done exceedingly well, like he did, like he did over the years, and he continued to, Mr. Mayor. Serve, host actually, the UML radio show every Sunday. So I don't know how he find his energies and time, but he has the passion to do so. So I thank him for that, on behalf of everyone, the councils and everyone, the resident of Lowell, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Come forward.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you all today for giving me a citation today, and my word is, you help me, I help you. That's the way I do it. Since I was here in 1990, that I started working in Lowell, I helped you to stop crime. I work with Ed Davis. I work with the school committee, and I stopped the fighting in temple, chambers for temple. That's the way I do it. And used to be helping to organize the board member of the school charter school, board member of the CBA, board member of the CMA, so that we help you to do, stop crime in here, so that right now, it on your hand, that to see what the crime is reduced a lot in Lowell. That I like it.
Thank you.
I said, I saw all thanks for all of you that recognized me on my work and to help you all, all the city together, that we work together. And right now, I still active on the activity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The motion to put 2.2 and 2.3 to accept and pass on file by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Yam, all the fair is say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, minutes of the nonprofit organization subcommittee, May 13th, City Council Regular Meeting, May 13th for acceptance. Motion to accept and pass on file by Counselor Gitcher, seconded by Counselor Dakota, all the fair is say aye, opposed motion passes. Counselor Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's okay. I'd like to make a motion to take item 5.7 out of order.
By Counselor Belanger, seconded by Counselor Robinson, to take 5.7 out of order, all the fair is say aye, opposed motion passes. A motion by Counselors Belanger and Robinson. Request City Manager work with the community partners to organize a regional fundraiser to benefit the Lowell Folk Festival Foundation. No second needed. Mr. Clerk?
Register Speaker Arthur Sutcliffe. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in front of you all. Thirty-seven years of the Folk Festival in the City of Lowell is something to be proud of, and our foundation is very happy and very proud to work to put this on every year for the benefit of us and for the city. We're starting to run into a little bit of a situation money-wise. The national endowments of the arts used to give us grant. We were okay for a grant this year, and the grant was pulled away, $20,000. Our sponsorships are not what they used to be. The companies that we go and hit for donations, they've, they'll give us some money, but it's cut down so much from what they used to give us. And for us to put on a festival that's worthy of the last 37 years is, you know, something that we're worried about. Well, this year, we're gonna, we're gonna get through it. And we're worried with even with the national park situation, what's gonna happen. We do get an agreement with the park, and we do get some money through the park for other festivals, but that, we don't know what the situation with that's gonna be. This year here, I think we'll, we'll get through it. We're gonna put a festival on. But I'm nervous about down the road, and this is why we're kind of searching for help, with some kind of aid, with partners, you know, that we can put together something to raise some funds that we can look forward to number 38 and 39. And with your help, that would be tremendous. It's kind of difficult to come before you under these conditions where we always were pretty self-sufficient, you know, to get this thing on the road and get it over. But now we're running into some difficulties, and everyone else is too. I understand that. But I think this is a very important event in the city. It does, it lightens the summer. It's a weekend of great things in the city, and we want to keep it going. And with your help, let's, let's keep it going. I appreciate very much the time and the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sutcliffe. Thank you. Counselor Belanger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to thank Chairman Arthur Sutcliffe for coming in tonight, and thank the rest of the advisory board for the hard work they've done for the last 37 years on this festival, where it used to start on JFK Plaza here, has now erupted into a multi-block, attracting 150,000 people in a three-day event. And we cannot simply even begin the notion of not having the Lowell Folk Festival. So I want to thank Arthur for his leadership and his team that brought us through the pandemic with after a two-year absence. It came back in 2023, 2022, stronger than ever. But nonetheless, we all saw the concern on Jim and Sutcliffe's tone. Some rough waters are ahead. There's no doubt about it. And I think it's up to elected officials and all stakeholders throughout the city and the region to do whatever they can to keep this thing sustainable and moving on for years and years to come. So with that being said, I would ask the manager and his administration to put their best foot forward to organize. I know we're looking at about 60 days away, and the festival will go off in 2025, everyone. I'm getting questions, and there's no doubt. There will be a festival in July. However, we are concerned for the future going forward. So, Mr. Manager, I will ask you and your administration to contact all city partners, stakeholders. This is a regional event that attracts people from all over, all the way from Boston and south of us, and it's really, really a tremendous event. I don't need to explain it to you. But please do everything you can. Let's get everybody at the table and see what we can do to salvage this, make sure this festival presses on for many years to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. This motion came about, it was a no-brainer. When I saw that they stood a $20,000 hit at the expense of the federal government, cutting back the grants, it's... I've been working the Folk Festival in one capacity or another since I was a little kid. My aunt had a vending booth at JFK, the first 10, 15 Folk Festivals. So, I mean, I think it's clear to everyone here that it's the parent of all events that go on in the city. There's nothing like it. People look forward to it all year long. I mean, when we had a hotel, people were making travel accommodations a year in advance. I think, as Arti said, and thank you again, Arti, for speaking, this year will go off. But I think if we can establish maybe a Merrimack Valley-wide fundraiser, annual, once a year, that Lowell hosts, similar, and 100% of proceeds go to the Folk Fest Foundation, I think that's one less thing that they have to worry about. And it's a desperately needed boost with the climate in Washington, and I think this is something that will help solidify and cement this festival for now till whenever Arti and the team say we can't do it anymore. So I think it's everything we can do to scrape together Merrimack Valley residents and businesses to come together and help this organization that it does so much for the region. I say, let's get together and do it. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to my colleagues for bringing this forward. Thanks to Arti for being here tonight to speak on behalf of the foundation. It's unfortunate, the circumstances that we find ourselves in, but this is definitely Lowell's biggest event every year. And I know that the residents downtown, the businesses downtown, everybody looks forward to this event every year for all the reasons. So whatever we can do to make sure that this keeps going, I'm gonna be in full support of that. So, Mr. Manager, if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll be looking forward to this fundraiser coming to be. So thanks for being willing to roll up your sleeves and help us pull this out. Thank you.
Counselor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. We hear the need. Where do people send a donation if they're people watching that want to donate? So how do they reach out and send a donation to the Folk Fest?
Thanks, Counselor. Online at lowelfolkfestival.org. There's a button right on there for donations. It's as plain as day, and folks can jump on that. And since the $20,000 hit, we have, you know, spiked, which will help us this year with donations. People understand. But it's the future we're worried about right now. But through that donation, it comes to us, and that goes to the running of the festival.
Arti, is there an address they can send, mail a check if they wanted to?
If they want to mail a check, they can mail it to Lowell Festival Foundation, Post Office, Box 217, Lowell, Mass. 01853.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleague for putting this motion on also, and thank you, Arti, for being here. I concur with what my colleagues say. You know, Lowell is synonymous with the Folk Festival. It's probably, I'm not being biased here, Arti, but I think it's probably the most famous Folk Festival in the country, not only good and fun for the Lowell residents, but bring a lot of tourists into the city, grow the business, just make our city great, make our city well-known throughout the entire country. Just go off on Counselor Gitcher's comment also. I don't know if through Mr. Mayor, through Mr. Manager, you could put the Lowell Folk Festival on the city website, get more information, and maybe have a donation button or link it to the Lowell Folk Festival website directly from the city website. I don't know if that's possible, if you could look into that, because I think the Folk Festival is really the city event. It's, you know, it's independent, but the partnership and so forth, it is really the face of Lowell for all these years. And I've had the pleasure and the privilege to volunteer the past few years through the Bucket Brigade, and I pretty much not only met people from all the country, but people from all the world. They travel from all the world to come to the City of Lowell. A small city like us in the country, people from all over the world still travel to come to the Folk Festival. So I think it's, it'd be great if the city could help promote the event through our website, just to get more out there, get more donations out there, link it to the Folk Fest website. I think that'd be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Look at all offices, Mr. Manager. All the fair is say aye, opposed motion passes. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're already under suspension of the rules, correct? So I wanted to bring forward a time-sensitive matter about the decision that we received last evening about the extension of the lease at the Innen Conference Center. I actually wrote out some remarks because I'm rather concerned, obviously, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well, and want to bring this forward. I want to speak out against extending the ICC lease as a shelter for 2026. I understand that the state is facing a housing crisis, and families need support. It feels like Lowell's being asked to absorb the majority of the families across the state. They've reported that hotels are closing statewide, Norfolk, Riviera are closing, but the ICC is transitioning to a rapid track site. We have no commitment that it will definitely close at the end of 2026, to my understanding at this time. It's just renewed through that date. We already have individual homelessness that has not been addressed within the city. So that's a big concern for me. With statewide hotel consolidation, will there be additional transportation costs under McKinney-Vento? Will this be the homeschool listed for all of those children that will go there every, possibly 30 days from their stay? Counselor Dakota may know more about that than I do. I think it's important for us to find out. At the same time, the state is spending $4 million a year leasing the ICC from UMass Lowell. It's a payment arrangement that purely benefits the university, and it comes at a taxpayer cost for us in Lowell. Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll was quoted on the Mass state website recently as saying, "The closing hotel shelters is essential to help families succeed and save the state hundreds of millions of dollars each year." But if those savings are real, I would ask, will some of those dollars be shifted back to Lowell to help cover this cost? I think it's a fair thing for them to do. Lowell has stepped up time and time again, and welcome families will continue to do that. But we need a real plan and a real investment, and we need to know that the ICC at the end of this will be converted to permanent affordable housing, and that it will happen at the end of 2026 with a firm commitment. Thank you.
So suspension of the rules on Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Yam, all the fair is say aye, opposed motion passes, just for the record. Thank you, Counselor. It being 7 o'clock, Section 4 Utility Public Hearing, 4.1, National Grid, Verizon, New England, request installation of 2JO poles, J-O poles, for service to 9 Baldwin Street. Second reading?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can we still put it in the form of a motion for the manager to work with the state and UMass Lowell to make sure that our needs are discussed, and we talk about the McKinney-Vento transportation costs and also the permanent plans for the site? Thank you.
By Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Robinson. They want to mail a check, they can mail it to Lowell Festival Foundation, Post Office Box 217, Lowell, Mass. 01853.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleague for putting this motion on also, and thank you, Artie, for being here. I concur with what my colleagues say. You know, Lowell is synonymous with the Folk Festival. It's probably, I'm not being biased here, Artie, but I think it's probably the most famous Folk Festival in the country, not only good and fun for the Lowell residents, but bring a lot of tourists into the city, grow the business, just make our city great, make our city well-known throughout the entire country. Just go off on Council Gitcher's comment also. I don't know if through Mr. Mayor, through Mr. Manager, you could put the Lowell Folk Festival on the city website, get more information, and maybe have a donation button or link it to the Lowell Folk Festival website directly from the city website. I don't know if that's possible, if you could look into that, because I think the Folk Festival is really the city event. It's, you know, it's independent, but the partnership and so forth, it is really the face of Lowell for all these years, and I've had the pleasure and the privilege to volunteer the past few years through the Bucket Brigade. And I pretty much not only met people from all the country, but people from all the world. They travel from all the world to come to the city of Lowell. A small city like us in the country, people from all over the world still travel to come to the Folk Festival. So I think it's, it'd be great if the city could promote the event through our website just to get more out there, get more donations out there, link it to the Folk Fest website. I think that'd be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Look at all offices, Mr. Manager. Great. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're already under suspension of the rules, correct? So I wanted to bring forward a time-sensitive matter about the decision that we received last evening about the extension of the lease at the Innen Conference Center. I actually wrote out some remarks because I'm rather concerned, obviously, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well, and want to bring this forward. I want to speak out against extending the ICC lease as a shelter for 2026. I understand that the state is facing a housing crisis and families need support. It feels like Lowell's being asked to absorb the majority of the families across the state. They've reported that hotels are closing statewide, Norfolk, Riviera are closing, but the ICC is transitioning to a rapid track site. We have no commitment that it will definitely close at the end of 2026, to my understanding at this time. It's just renewed through that date. We already have individual homelessness that has not been addressed within the city. So that's a big concern for me. With statewide hotel consolidation, will there be additional transportation costs under McKinney-Vento? Will this be the homeschool listed for all of those children that will go there every possibly 30 days from their stay? Council Dakota may know more about that than I do. I think it's important for us to find out. At the same time, the state is spending $4 million a year leasing the ICC from UMass Lowell. It's a payment arrangement that purely benefits the university, and it comes at a taxpayer cost for us in Lowell. Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll was quoted on the Mass state website recently as saying "The closing hotel shelters is essential to help families succeed and save the state hundreds of millions of dollars each year." But if those savings are real, I would ask, will some of those dollars be shifted back to Lowell to help cover this cost? I think it's a fair thing for them to do. Lowell has stepped up time and time again, and welcome families, will continue to do that. But we need a real plan and a real investment, and we need to know that the ICC at the end of this will be converted to permanent affordable housing, and that it will happen at the end of 2026 with a firm commitment. Thank you.
Great. So suspension of the rules on Councilor Scott, second by Council Young. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes, just for the record. Thank you, Councilor. It being seven o'clock, Section 4 Utility Public Hearing, 4.1, National Grid, Verizon, New England, request installation of 2JO poles, JO poles, for service to 9 Baldwin Street. Second reading? No, just open it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can we still put it in the form of a motion for the manager to work with the state and UMass Lowell to make sure that our needs are discussed, and we talk about the McKinney-Vento transportation costs and also the permanent plans for the site? Thank you.
By Council Scott, second by Council Robinson. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes.
Thank you.
Returning to the utility public hearing, all those in favor, in favor, in favor. The portion meeting is closed. All those in opposition, opposition, opposition. That portion meeting is closed. The motion to refer to wire inspector for report recommendation by Council Mercia, second by Council Noon. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 4.2, second public hearing, Boston Gas, National Grid, request installation of replacement gas regulator pit near Rogers and High Streets. We'll start with opening the meeting, all those in favor, in favor, in favor. The portion meeting is closed. All those in opposition, opposition, opposition. That portion meeting is closed. The motion again to refer to wire inspector for report recommendation by Council Gitcher, second by Council Dakota. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 5 City Council motions, 5.1, Council Noon, request city manager have the Lowell Police Department Superintendent provide the city council with their scheduled plan holding a civil service exam recruitment session with assistance provided regarding application process ahead of the municipal police deadline. Second by Council Robinson, Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe Council Robinson filed this number of months ago. We need to have a plan in place, you know, and how are we going to do this? And make that plan, you know, as part of, you know, share that plan with other, communicate that plan with other in the community, and put it on the city website, particularly the police department, so that, you know, I mean, you don't have to keep checking, you know, plan in place and make that happen. Because if our effort is to try to, you know, build that workforce, we need to have that plan, we need to follow that plan. If we cannot do more than just simply follow the plan and make it happen.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. I just recently saw that through this hybrid model, we're able to hire and staff up, which I think is long overdue and desperately needed. But through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, do you know if the Career Center has any scheduled upcoming, kind of like tabling, or going out anywhere into the public outreach for like job fair stuff? Because I think that might be a great tool to use as well to kind of advertise a civil service exam recruitment session almost. Because when we're out in the community, I think we're going to where the people, meeting the people where they are, and I think this is an option that that's going to be something a lot of people might not even really be aware of yet.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council is, yes, they do try to do that. But right now, Council Noon and Council Robinson, that should be able to be discussed after June, after the current Assessment Center is before us. And the goal would be to try to get more aggressive, obviously, in the future about bringing people in. There was a time at one, at one point that did, I believe it was over at the Senior Center, but all of this has to take place after the, I believe the Assessment Center is going to be completed in June of this year. After that, we'll be able to push both, I think, ideas that you guys have to try to try to get. Now, what we do for one would have to do for everybody, any type of assistance, we would have to look from that perspective. Currently, right now, going through the Assessment Center, going from patrolman up to sergeant, lieutenant, et cetera, there are private companies that do this type of work. But I think coming in from a patrolman level, we could offer blanket assistance, I guess, if that's, if that sounds right, blanket assistance for all to get additional help or whatever the case may be. The chief, the superintendent and I have been talking about how to get that done. The one that gets a little bit trickier is going from patrolman up into a higher rank, because that's when the Assessment Center comes in to play. So that's something we're still kind of trying to work on and how we would do that right now. I see one of the officers, we've been talking about this in the future, probably going for something, but they need to go to study, and it's usually from an organization that offers assistance. The entry-level stuff, we can, I believe we can definitely help with, Councilor, absolutely. It's the second level, going to sergeant, lieutenant, captain, et cetera.
Council Noon.
Just want to add, Mr. Mayor, so, yes, I'm happy, you know, I would encourage more people taking the civil service exam. But we know that about a year now, almost, the state passed, the governor signed back in November 2024, the hybrid hiding, which is allowing the police, the fire chief and the police chief to hide people out of that civil service list. So that's another tool that the chief has, both chiefs has in their disposal, to try to address those diverse workforce per se. So in combination, this is a great opportunity for the city of Lowell to do so.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The hybrid is very exciting. It really is. Now we have to convince folks to leave their home force, right, their home police department, to hopefully come to the city of Lowell. And that's what we're looking at right now. So I think it is something that we can definitely get to or, you know, obviously try to get to, yes, in the beginning of the hiring process. The only issue, the civil service exam is a lot easier. Hybrid is obviously a second path, a different path, but the Assessment Center going from patrol upwards, that's something we need to work on a little bit. But in talking to the superintendent, he's excited to try to get as many people as possible. From the fire department's perspective, we're pretty, we're going to be pretty full with that. We're doing pretty well. Our goal this year in the police department is to get to 240 folks. That's a, I think that's a real goal, and with hybrid, this could be a real opportunity for us. As everybody knows here, we usually, we budget for 250. So, 252, right, 252. And with people with retirements and things of that nature, it's always difficult to try to get to that 252, but we will try to try to get there.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was just, where are we on that 252 right now? Are we, do we know?
Mr. Manager.
Not knowing the 111Fs, we're probably in the 224 range, but 111Fs is when an officer gets injured and goes out and then comes back, et cetera. But we're probably in that 224, and that's why it's kind of a loose number right now. When officers go out, we want them obviously back as soon as possible. So our goal, once again, it, our civil service exam, and not to get into this, is kind of backwards. It really was, or it still is. But with this new hybrid option, it's going to give us a different, a different opportunity to do a whole bunch of things beforehand as opposed to waiting till the end. And I'd gladly talk to you on the side with the superintendent, or the, I know that the chief is here from the fire department at some point. The civil service is a little outdated, something we need to go after. The legislature went after the hybrid section to try to see if this was going to happen. And apparently, June 3, I was just being whispered to, the Chumpsford Forum, we're going to be tabling for, for the future of police officers and probably firefighters as well.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.2, Council Noon, request city manager meet with the appropriate entities to revisit the maintenance of effort agreement with the school department, seconded by Council Janess, Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we all know that the, this making of effort agreement hasn't been updated for over a decade. So maybe it's time that the managers meet up with the schools and, you know, kind of lay that out, what is in line with the making of it agreement and what's not. So that's certainly the gist of it, because it's outdated. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Council Noon's comments, though I would hope that with the creation of the new Facilities Department, that the maintenance of effort would come into the conversation. So any comments, city manager? Is that fair to assume?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. I've been talking to the superintendent on the phone quite a bit over the past week or so, but maintenance of effort did come up to it, the Facility Department did come up to it. The superintendent and I are, you know, pushing back and forth. There's no question about the discussions we've been having. I plan on meeting with him more in the future as this goes on. I believe it's 6.2 that we'll be discussing today about a plan that we came up with. But we are pushing and pulling, and I think with the Facilities Department is a real opportunity there, it's something that this council's been going for, and I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but I think it's an idea he's definitely worth, you know, he's worth listening. It's worth it for him to listen to, as he has stated to me. And if it was something that, from the city council's standpoint, and this is my opinion, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the superintendent, I think that we should be responsible for the buildings, for, to make sure that the buildings are in good order. One of the concerns, or one of the things that I'm sure the council has seen this year is through our budget that we put together, we were putting in approximately 240,000, 260,000 into a maintenance account, which was lacking. That maintenance account this year, if it's approved by this council, will be a million dollars. What does it need to be? It probably needs to be a couple of million dollars. There's been no secret with the tens of millions, they'll say it's over $30 million that we've increased in spending in MSRP, excuse me, MSBA ARP monies. Some of the, some of the facilities are a little bit above what we, what we can handle, and we're going to need to push it out. But I would say that the conversations, most of the conversations have gone very good with the superintendent and I. I still consider him a friend of mine, I do. Sometimes things get pushed back and forth, and I can appreciate his, his style, and I hope he can appreciate mine. But I think that from the city council's perspective, we need to make sure that we're investing in these buildings and that in future years to come, we're not replacing things that quite frankly should have, should have been maintenance, regular maintenance. So I do think that the maintenance of effort could be discussed or should be discussed, and I also think the Facilities Department could be a welcomed piece for the school department as well as the city.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question around this, just because I've heard it from several people that's been brought forward about what, there is an existing agreement, and that is signed off every year, correct, by the, the school department when the, when the numbers are figured out? I just want to see if that's something they agree to at this time.
Mr. Manager. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an issue that comes up pretty regularly. But every year, you know, the school department has an obligation to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to submit the end-of-year report. As part of that report are certain charges from the city, this is what we call maintenance of effort. Those are codified in a memorandum of understanding, and to the counselor's point, it was executed in 2007, but it was an agreement that was signed by the school committee at the time and the city council at the time. There have been, in my experience here, several times where we've been asked to take a look at it, and in my opinion, it is a fair way to tally the charges. There are certain charges under the regulations that are allowed to be counted, and then certain charges that are, that are reported but don't count towards the total. Certainly, we can get into the, we will provide all this information in a report to the council, but there are things that get discussed, like administrative overhead for certain departments in the city, that make up somewhat of a small fraction of the total. The larger cost drivers in that report that does get signed off by the schools, that does get submitted to the Department of Elementary-Secondary Education and approved by them, and then is audited afterwards by our outside auditors. You know, the big ticket items in there are the Medicare tax that the city pays from the city budget, the pension assessment for non-teacher school, non-teacher school department personnel, like custodians and paraprofessionals, health insurance for retired teachers, the premiums, workers' compensation benefits for school department employees, the salaries for the school nurses, the utility costs for the school buildings. I see Ms. Moses, who's certainly aware of those, and we've made efforts to reduce those costs. But those are some of the things that we talk about in maintenance of effort, and those are all allowable costs under the regulation. But certainly, you know, we're happy to sit down with the superintendent and review all of those, as well as discuss areas where they may want to make a change, and there may be areas where we want to make a change too. But those are reported, verified, and audited afterwards.
Thank you.
And just, as well, just to inform the council that the consolidation vote that the council took last week is on tomorrow night's school committee agenda. So, see how that goes. All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.3, Council Noon, request city manager provide an update on the Merrimack River Boat House Concept, seconded by Council Janess, Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was, I was excited about this project a couple of years ago. I think our now assistant, Assistant City Managers Director of DPD, Joe Vannaby-Roses, was then, was a design planner for the city of Lowell. You know, it's, it's an exciting possibility of turning this city-owned, I think, one-acre land into something good. And I believe at the time, you have a public and private developers who want to really develop this into, you know, down, they talk about down the first floor be a boathouse, and up they have like restaurants, retail store, entertainment sort of, which is awesome in that area. And it's not going to interfere with the plan of Brookbridge at all, or any properties that the city owned there. So this is an awesome opportunity, maybe through Mr. Managers, Assistant City Manager Joe Vannaby-Roses can go back and revisit it and say, hey, you know, if you still interest, and let's do something. So that's the reason I asked for this. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.4, Council Noon, Council Janess, request city manager work with the Citizen Advisory Committee to the Lowell Police Department to provide a summary report on activities. No second needed. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this committee has been formed for a while. There's a need for this committee. The mission of this Citizen Advisory Committee is to enhance police development ability to respond to the need of the community. This member, this committee was to assist in community outreach effort between the police department and the community, in the, you know, the outreach, the planning for, let's say, civil service exam preparation and so what, you know, and that. Also, this committee tasks us to promote public awareness of the city police service activity, program, and public safety issue. Also, this committee tasks us to solicit public input regarding police service program and issue of public safety. They also tasked to provide community feedback and recommendation of the police program and activity, the list go on. So the idea is that, you know, where are we at? You know, give us an update of activity they've done so far. And, you know, and if they need help, then we're here to do what we can to help. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this motion being on and Council Noon calling and asking if I would join him on this one. We all heard from a representative from a different board who was in here last week who was frustrated with the lack of effort around that board and getting that board to meet. And to me, that's, that was kind of a wake-up call. I was like, okay. And so I think that this motion kind of speaks to really what should probably be a larger effort, a larger, more widespread effort of really checking in with all of our boards and commissions, maybe setting up some kind of formal annual report or something that they can do to get back to the administration and us, that just kind of runs us through what they've been able to accomplish this year, what their challenges have been, what we can do to help them move along and be more engaged and more efficient. I think it's great that we have so many residents who step up wanting to serve on these boards, and I think that we just need to close the loop and make sure that we're empowering these boards to do the things we need them to do, and we're helping them along the way and getting rid of any, anything that might be blocking their progress. And so I think this might be a good opportunity to figure out how we can do some kind of annual check-in with each of the boards, just to understand what they need and what we might be able to provide going forward. Thank you.
All the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.5, Council Young, request city manager place Walker Street from Broadway Street to Wall Street on the paving list, seconded by Council Mercia, Council Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city had done a great job in paving the four-way stop between Broadway and Walker Street. For some reason, it stopped just both streets all the way to the, the bridge where the railroad is, and the resident who lived on, in front of the Bertha and Wall Street asked a question, how come the paving stopped there? The road is broken up so badly, and they just want to know. So I do not have the answer, and I'm hoping that the manager and property department can provide some answer to the motion. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection to the maker of the motion, if I could add Meadowcroft Street, I don't know if it's already on the paving list or repaving list or whatever, but it is horrible and I heard from many people that live on that street and/or travel that street every day and I travel it myself, it's horrific. It's horrible, I'm sorry, I have to say that. Thank you.
I have no objection.
No objection.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Council Scott?
Thank you. I would just echo councillor Mercy's sentiment, it's been brought up multiple times. I'm not sure, I know we were waiting for some work to be done underground for a while and if you could get an update on that to see whether or not it's ready to go or not. Thank you.
All the affairs, AI, opposed motion passes, 5.6, councillor Belanger. Request city manager at the DPD provide an update and timeline on the Riley School Playground upgrades, seconded by councillor Getche, councillor Belanger.
I look forward to the motion, progress we're at there. I was talking to a few constituents on Douglas Road with the paving going on, there's a lot of excitement of the improvements for Collie Stadium and the Riley School Playground and the, they're very appreciative of all the city investments in that area of the city on Douglas Road, so I look forward to the update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All the affairs, AI, opposed motion passes, 5.8, councillor Robinson. Request city council as well as city administration consider drafting and sending a letter of support for a number of bills, Senate 1114, House 1811 and House
Second.
311 Clean Slate Act, an act requiring clean slate automated for concealing as well as any other similar legislation for our state delegation and Congresswoman Trahan, seconded by councillor Yum, councillor Robinson.
Thank you. There's a number of bills that are working their way through different levels. This is about pretty much, you know, trying to remove whatever barriers within reason to help people get back on their feet and be active, contributing members of society. So any support that we can send towards these efforts, I think it will go a long way, especially in a city like Lowell. Thank you.
All the affairs, AI, opposed motion passes, 5.9, councillor Robinson. Request city manager have the transportation engineer install a residential sticker parking only sign on the end of Victor Street, seconded by councillor Mercia, councillor Robinson.
Thank you. The rest of the street already has these, I believe the traffic engineer did work with the residents over there, especially now that they've been working with the school to kind of keep the traffic flow moving over by the Greenfield School there. And so at the very end of Victor, the gentleman just did a tremendous job, a newer homeowner completely renovated it, beautiful house, beautiful brand-new fence and he's the only home that doesn't have these kind of signs and sticker parking in front of his home. The rest of the street already has it, so anything we can do to just unify it, I think greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All the affairs, AI, opposed motion passes, 6. Communications from the city manager, 6.1, motion responses. Volleyball courts at Gage Park, councillor Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Some of the things in the report though, we did bring a member of the community to speak and advocate on behalf of the students and the, and the youth groups that he works with at Gage. This request for hotter surface, I understand if modular flooring isn't feasible, but I think they would be more than happy even following suit with Clemente Park where it's stone dust material because for whatever reason, it's California beach volleyball isn't something that Lowellians celebrate. I don't understand it myself, I don't play it, but it seems like stone dust is the preferred flooring as opposed to sand, so I mean, and I see we do have a vote later on, on the agenda, one vote to accept some, some funding, 25,000 air mark, I believe, from Rep. Elliott, air marks for Gage. I just hope that, you know, we can find good usage for those funds, but I think this one should be kind of a quick fix with, with the stone dust potentially or something along those lines. Thank you.
What's your response, oh, sorry, yeah. National Grid geothermal pilot update, councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the administration for this report. We'll note for anyone watching, if anyone's interesting, interested in kind of a town hall debrief as to what went on with this, this project and what might be on the horizon for the future, next Wednesday, May 28th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, UMass Lowell South Campus, Coburn Hall, 8:50 Broadway Street, Rome 255, there's going to be a town hall discussion of this and I hope to attend. I had one quick question, which is, do we know if National Grid is going to be joining us at this meeting?
Moses?
Thank you so much for the question. We haven't received confirmation from National Grid yet, but we have extended that invitation.
That's about all we can do. Thank you very much.
The next four responses, it's okay with councillor Getche, you want to take it together and that way I can maybe get my, my back up again. Inventory of hydrants, unaccounted water, UAW 2224, out of service hydrants and emergency water main breaks, councillor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Mr. Manager, through the mayor to manager Golden, thank you for the report. It says of the 2,356 hydrants within the city, there are tentatively 66. We don't really know what's left, it looks like, and I'm not sure how much of the city that actually was looked at to come up with the 66. It just says tentatively, so could I ask you, and we asked this last time, and I guess I just didn't file in a form of a motion, but I'll file in in the form of a motion that you provide the city council with the fire department's last three annual fire hydrant inspections, because those will tell you everything that are out there, they'll tell you the three nipples, they'll tell you everything that's out there and it helps us actually gauge future capital planning and it also helps us understand what we have. Right on Andover Street, you got an old quarry from the 1800s that's sitting out there. And when you start looking through the city, there are some major issues with some of this stuff, so I would just be very curious to see the last three annual reports from the fire department. I know they're going around right now looking at the fire hydrants, so if there's any way that you could provide us with that within the next few weeks so that when we come budget time and you talk about the water increases and stuff, we can make sure that we understand what needs to be done. Thank you. So the second one, which was the unaccounted for water motion, when, when I read that, again, I want to thank the executive director, Mr. DeShanes, for the report. You look and when you look at the main break one that's next, I don't know how these numbers even come into play. In 2024, it says you have 92% unaccounted for, I mean, accounted for metered water, but you had 26 main breaks, which, that doesn't make any sense, but when we look at this, it's, it's curious to me that when you look at the out year, which is 2023, it was 73.1%. So if we can just look at those numbers and just get back to me, that's okay. The, the last one I had was, the number of hydrants out of service and their location, again, that's something that we should be able to receive in, in the fire department's report when that comes out, the annual one, because there's more than three, I'm 100% sure of that. But, I mean, it's just reporting and documentation and stuff like that, Mr. Manager, that, that comes in, I think that once we get the fire department report, we can probably discuss that a lot better. And on the last one, it's a report on water main breaks that have been repaired by the city staff in what was repaired by the contractor. This one's the most disturbing of all. I think, Mr. Manager, you would agree that out of 56 water main breaks, you had 41 fixed by, I'm sorry, you had 41 fixed by the contractor and 15 fixed by the city. And we haven't reduced any employees, staff through the years. What's happened is, and I'm not sure, so I guess through Mr. Mayor, to Mr. DeShanes, we've had the same number of MEO3s and just for the city council and everyone else, an MEO3 means that you have a hydraulics license and a CDL license. Out of those MEO3s, did any of them not have the qualified licenses to be an MEO3?
One of them just received their CDL in August. We have had to turn over employees. A lot of these issues are not answering the call. We do have to repair main breaks and we, we are making some changes down there. I do have some updates as far as that. Find it. Of the new employees, what we have to do is we have to change the attitude to a proactive mindset, councillor. But as far as training goes, two newest hires for MEO3s enrolled in three classes, hydrant operation and maintenance. They completed two-day competent training, competent person training and two-day back home front end loader training to obtain their hoisting licenses. We've also just hired a very experienced foreperson who's going to be starting on June 2nd and also we interviewed for the open MEO3 position. The candidate selected has a CDL Class A license, three hoistings and a container endorsement. I have been in contact and I had a meeting with the union president and the business agent and we're trying to work through this to have a solution to move forward.
The thing that's disturbing to me is since fiscal year '24, we've had at least six employees that are the same, six employees there and like you said, it just comes down to answering the phone when they're on overtime and not. And through the mayor, to manager Golden, manager Golden, when you look at the contracts, is there a way that we can, and I know that you've worked on this hard because you gave them, I think it's $6 an hour if you come in, plus your overtime rate, to get people to come in? The last 29 water main breaks in the city of Lowell were fixed by a contractor. Councillor Belanger had saw one in Belvedere and had sent over a picture of the contractor sitting there, but we still have city staff that's going to these things with them. So we're double paying all the way through and, and I'm sure CFO Baldwin has picked up on this all the way through because of the cost to the contractor is out of sight and now we're asking residents for more money and we have the same staffing levels. And, and that's disturbing and that's the hard part is, we've talked about this and CFO Baldwin, you know, I've asked this question for the last three and a half years of being on this council is, how do we do this? How do we manage this and keep the same staff and have, you know, 29 water main breaks in a row that were fixed by contractors? And they weren't major water main breaks, most people in the water field could fix these readily, but it's costing the taxpayer double the money because we're paying health insurance for employees, we're paying their salaries and then we have to call a contractor and we also have an, you know, an undersized staff, but a staff go out there and manage these breaks. So that, that's the disturbing part, we're paying twice for the same service and I think that we're putting residents at risk. In many cases, like the Mariposa one that was on 8/11/2024, the water department went up to the residents and said, we're shutting off the water and left on a Friday and I had to call after a resident called me and said, is this normal? They had no water for two days. And, and you know, I had to call you, Mr. Manager, who you got the staff over there to fix it readily, but you had no idea. And, and that's the sad part is, there should be a policy in this city, if they're shutting off residents' water to their homes, that the manager is immediately notified or his staff or his assistant city manager, immediately, because we have residents that can't go without water and that whole section of the street without, was without water for a day and a half, almost two days. And now it seems like the tail's wagging the dog, you know, and, and we're being told how this is going to be done and now you got 29 and I thank Mr. DeShanes for coming out here, the executive director, and saying, you know, here we are, we're trying to resolve this and hopefully it works, but we can't afford another fiscal year of this behavior because of the cost to the residents and the tax increases that we're putting on them. And, and hopefully we're reducing the contractor piece, because I haven't gone through the whole budget yet, but hopefully that line item in the contract is being reduced down and we're going to start holding people accountable in the water department to actually show up, as Mr. DeShane said, for after hour calls. And even during the day, some of these were fixed and people didn't go do it and that's, that's the hard part.
Correct.
And hopefully, Mr. Manager, you have a solid plan. It changes, because the last three and a half years, it's gone nothing but downhill and the taxpayer has been on the short end of the stick, as you're well aware of. Thank you again for the report and I look forward to seeing the fire department's report on the fire hydrants because I am 1,000% sure, if they can't fix a water main break in those same years, they didn't change any fire hydrants or it was very limited. So we need to get going on this. This system is old and dated as it is and we need to make sure that we keep up with that system the best we can for the residents. Thank you again.
Ms. Belanger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through the council, councillor, you're right, we did incentivize folks to come in and of course, the dangers that you have is when you're calling in, you need a three-person crew and I think to the director, we've always had success of bringing one person in, sometimes two, but we could never get to that third person. And our guys and gals over there, our employees, I should say, excuse me, our employees are very good at, you know, locating the leak, shutting the leak in and unfortunately, we don't have that third person in, we do have to call in one of our contractors. So we do, I do have, we do have a plan moving forward. The council has, I believe, seen what we're trying to do in the budget for the future and to try to increase, of course, we have a working form incoming in that Mr., the director had just talked about a moment ago, but we also have a bunch of different protocols that will be coming in for FY 2026 and those protocols will be everything dealing with trench, safety, et cetera, and that's something that's been lacking, but stability is needed in that department. We've known that for some time, the assistant city management working on that with our director as well as the entire team. So I, I look forward to a brighter day, to be honest with you, with this, because that and, I, I thought the incentivization would, would have helped and that just didn't help at that time.
Mr. Manager, it, it seems as though some of our employees have become very good at watching other people work and that's what it comes down to and I'm saying it right out loud to you, after the last three years, and it's very easy to get comfortable with that, if the five of us work together and we know we can only bring in two, every other one, we go to two different people and the other three get down and we don't have to do it. And it's, reality is that some people are here and they, they do not want to do that job, they want the paycheck during the day. And that's said out loud and I hope people up there are disgusted with it, we do have a changeover and there's new employees and hopefully they come in and do their job. If not, then we have to make some serious decisions.
Councillor Robinson and councillor Belanger. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to CFO, do we have a ballpark number on what we spent on the contractors for water main breaks for this fiscal year yet?
Councillor, I have the numbers from January 2024 until currently. It was two different contractors and the cost up to date is $1,075,506.89.
And that's pretty much all labor work?
I'm sorry?
That's pretty much all labor work, right? All right, thank you.
Councillor Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the motion responses, very extremely detailed and informative, Mr. Manager, thank you and to you and the appropriate departments. But our motion response to the unaccounted of water seemed like we're doing pretty good. The last two out of three years were over 90% accounted for. However, in 2023, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, we had a significant dip due to, quote, "human error." Mr. Manager, what went on there and what was done to remedy it, may I ask?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Belanger, there was, there was an accounting error. When you do this report, you have total finished water and you have net finished water. Now, the difference being is what we supply to surrounding towns. Now, the total finished water was $3,833 million, but the net was $3,555. In addition to that, we also have other metered water, which is recycled. We recycle our backwash water and we send it back to the head of the works, that's why we're 102% efficient at the water utility. The, the spreadsheets were attached to the report, however, the person filling out the report did not include that amount of 256 million gallons. So in actuality, I've also, we've been in contact with the DEP and they responded to us Friday, allowing us to revise this report. Now, after going through these calculations, it's down to 8% unaccounted for water, not 26%.
Okay. All right, that's much better. Okay, human error happens and it sounds like you took steps to correct that. Mr. DeShane, thank you very much. And lastly, the emergency water main breaks, this councillor Getche alluded to just last week and assistant city manager, Sharma Shao, was very good. Whenever there's a water main break in the city, this entire council receives a text as to where and when one happens in my district, like it did last week, I try and be there within a few minutes, which I was last week, I was there within 10 minutes and I was... there within 10 minutes. And I was a little surprised to see a contractor there. You know, you know, I like to see that money to go to our work, our workers, their families. I thought that'd be very beneficial. It was Monday, 4:30 or so. I thought it'd be prime time to, you know, I don't know what the staffing, maybe there's something. I don't know on that, but this particular day. But what I do know is I'd like to see that culture change. There's certainly room for improvement where, you know, less than 15 out of approximate 60, that's, you know, not even 25%, is our crews fixing water main breaks. I understand things happen in the middle of the night in the winter, and it's tough, you know. So that I understand. But there's certainly room for improvement, Mr. Duchesne. So please, if you can change that, try and motivate our employees. I'm behind them. We value them. And if, what they need from us, equipment, please let us know. But I would like to see that these breaks stay more in-house than they do, largely because of the exuberant costs, as Councilor Getchy alluded to. I mean, it's two to three, four times as much, depending on the hour, to pay these contractors. And so I'd much rather, I value our employees. I'd much rather see them get it. So please relay a message. I greatly appreciate them. What they do, this is not an easy line of work. But I would kindly ask that, you know, I'd like to see some improvement as well.
I agree with the council.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
On the same page as you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't mean for you to take the brunt of this, Mr. Duchesne, but that's a staggering number, $1,075,000. It appeared to, what, years pass, I think we're around $150,200. My, my question to you is, did you alert the administration that we were on track for this type of an increase? And what was done to change the culture over there? We just spent over $800,000 more than we did the year before, and we're looking at serious budget issues this year. So if you can answer that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes. Like I had said earlier, it's a matter of people picking up the phone and coming in. I did bump into Connor, Assistant Manager, CFO, Connor Baldwin, maybe in the middle of the winter at City Hall. It was very brief, but I discussed with him what was going on and, you know, the issue. And we both agree, it's not sustainable.
Because we are, we are talking the same staffing levels, 11, 12 employees around there?
Right now, there's 3, 8, 9.
Okay.
We have our 35-year foreperson who's going to be retiring Thursday. So I'm glad that we're getting an experienced person on board June 2nd, and the MEO that-
You have a new one coming on board?
Yes, we do. He's very experienced as well.
So I guess, Mr. Manager, that obviously is unacceptable at this point. I mean, that, those costs are unbearable. If I was a taxpayer, I'd be on the phone with my district councilor tonight, hopefully, not after 10 o'clock, but that'd be nice. But in all seriousness, we need, definitely need a culture change. And Mr. Duchesne does a tremendous job, but if somebody doesn't pick up the phone, you know, how's that his fault? But then we need, we need to make a change with some personnel if that's the case. All right? Thank you.
Council Getchy?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to Manager Golden, you've had a foreman vacant for almost three years over there. I missed that on, I was going through the budgets. And why would we, especially when we're seeing older employees and people leave, why do we leave a foreman position vacant for so long? I mean, there has to be people that we train in between and try to move up. I've seen one person who's been on here, he's been an MEO III for as long as I went back. And I'm just wondering, you know, are there people in-house, or what is the, the challenge to try to get somebody in when we pay very good money for those positions?
Mr. Manager?
Want to make sure I say this correctly, but in order to take that position, and I know, Counselor, you might know this as well, you need to be a D3. And trying to encourage folks to take the distribution III license, that's one of the challenges. I think we're even looking from the treatment side. I believe it's a T4, as I'm looking at, yeah.
To, to be the primary, but-
To be the primary.
If you're secondary, you need a T3.
T3. But what we're finding out, and if anyone's listening right now, and they're looking for a, a career ladder, there's a career ladder there. And some of our MEOs don't want to necessarily move up to that responsibility.
Currently, we don't have anybody in there who has a license, do we? Once, once the foreman retires?
We are using an interim.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying of our workers that are there currently, our staff-
I, Counselor, I've, I've sat down with them, I've done one-on-ones, I've had group discussions in that garage, and I've asked them, why don't you want to improve? It makes your, your skill set makes you more of a commodity. Why aren't you getting your distribution licenses?
You are highlighting-
A lot of them say, well, you know, I don't have to.
You are highlighting to the public everything that's been said for three years. Is people don't want to get their licenses. They don't want to come in, they want to work, they picked their shift now, it changed their hours a few years back. They want to work earlier hours, get out earlier, and that's not dedication in, to this city at all. And that's not the employee we're looking for. And at the end of the day, we went out and we just raised pay of a finance person because we couldn't get anybody. And it's the same thing here. If we can't get people who qualify, we need to pay more and get the, especially in that field. It is the largest health department that this city has. It's your drinking water. And if people are not committed to come in, and they're not committed to get a license, what commitment do they have to keeping us safe out there? The fire department goes out every single day and fights fires. We just had Red Cross in here, and they said that Lowell had the most fires in the area that were major, in the Northeast. And here we are, letting people run around like cowboys and Indians here and drive around the city, and they're telling us what our residents need. That's the sad part. And I've said this for three and a half years, and it hasn't gotten better. And that's what the hope is now, is that we're looking at financial tough times over there. We're asking people for more money, and we're going to pay more to fix these things today's money versus when they should have been maintained all the way through. That's all I'm saying again. Thank you.
Thank you. 6.2, Mr. Duchesne, thank you. 6.2 official report, FY 26, school funding update, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselors, last week, last Tuesday, we had a discussion about trying to get additional money over to the school department. So Wednesday and Thursday, we worked on some ideas that I presented before you. And the first idea is essentially to wait and see what the state house delegation is going to, going to do. One of the things we came up with was, let's take a, take a deep breath, find out what could possibly happen. I think the proposal that we put forth in, in the two-day timeframe, as you remember, as you recall, by Friday at noon time, we have to file this. But it's reasonable, it's a wait-and-see approach. The Senate, unless something's changed, I haven't seen it yet, but the Senate is currently in session as we speak. There's a supplementary budget going on in discussion with the Fair Share Act, with, there's additional money in that. I've spoke with the superintendent. We haven't met yet, but we will, to have this discussion, as I had stated earlier. Sometimes it does get a little heated back and forth in regards to trying to balance both things. I do think that our job here, as a city, or the city council, is to ensure that the buildings are in top-notch shape. I think that over three and a half, almost close to three and a half years now, three and a half years ago, I guess, three years and a couple of months, that wasn't the case, and I think that we've put an awful lot of money into that. I do think we should wait for the final budget to happen. This is something that we have to do every year anyhow. I think that next Tuesday, we can still move forward with our own particular budget. And then by the time the state budget comes through, which would be in a best-case scenario, the 1st of July, history tells us it might be mid-July, but that's okay. There's nothing wrong there. We can adjust at that point in time with the additional monies. We're hoping for the additional monies. Some of the concerns that had hit us, quite frankly, 20 hours before we came to budget, was the fact, and I've talked to Senator Kennedy, I know how hard he's working on this as well, but we were hit twice with the, the charter school, the charter school side of it, to the tune of about the, the assessment as well as the money coming into us. So the reimbursement rate came down, our assessment went up. And that was to the tune of about $2.4 million. And that happened just moments before we, we filed for this. We had to make it a balanced budget. I think there's a lot of good things in this. I am confident that we are still going to met, to meet net school spending. Once again, the superintendent and I may have our differences back and forth in how to get that done. And I respect everything he said, and I'm hoping he's respecting what I'm saying. But I think from the city's perspective, our job is to ensure that students and teachers have a warm place, have a cool place, have a place where things are working appropriately. I think that's our first responsibility, and that's where we put some additional monies into our DPW account. And in talking to, excuse me, in talking to the superintendent back and forth, we did finally connect on Friday. We've been talking about other things. I think Counselor Scott had brought up some things in regards to the ICC. But we've been having these discussions, and in my opinion, this currently right now, I think we should take a deep breath, wait for the state to respond. And then we have four proposals. One is the, the kind of wait-and-see approach. The second approach with the PEC has been denied by the teachers' union already. The third approach, we're waiting on our response, which I know we'll do. And the fourth response would be something we can discuss in coming, in a coming month or so, to see how we can backfill any of the funding. But once again, I'm still very confident, our job is to make sure that we make net school spending. This past year, our net school spending number was over $5 million. And I'm, I'm confident in our future, we're going to, going to go above what our net school spending is. And just as a reminder to the residents and the citizens that are listening today, net school spending is the, the dollar figure that we must make. Other cities and towns don't make this. We have, I'm very proud to say we have. And I still believe we're going to be millions of dollars above our net school spending. So this, this proposal is just, it's just that. It's something that we came up with Wednesday and Thursday. And I would like to thank the finance team, as well as the entire team, because we kind of put everything together to find out how we could do this while at the same time giving a reprieve to the taxpayer at, at 2.5%, and not going above that 2.5% piece on the, on the tax rate. So glad to take any questions. But once again, with the Senate still being in session, with the conference committee weeks away from actually wrapping up anything on our final dollar figure, with a supplemental budget being discussed right now through Mass Municipal, Mass Municipal Association, there are still monies that possibly could come in to the city on behalf of the education.
Council Robinson, Getchy, and Dakota. Council Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the manager for this report. And, and, I mean, I agree. I think if there is a shot that there's funding coming from the state to assist the school and the classrooms, I think it is wise to see, let's see what that number actually looks like. I mean, some of the other alternatives that we're even exploring, that PEC money, that's, that's a tricky situation. And that's money that the employees contributed over time. And, and when we disbanded from Blue Cross Blue Shield, that was the 25% portion that went back to the employees' contributions. And I know there was earmarks in place to help those with fixed incomes, retirees, to be able to draw on that pool of money for catastrophic events, for incredible spikes at premiums once you're on a fixed income. So there are some really good benefits that that PEC group carved out to help their members that have retired. So I wouldn't really lean heavily on trying to get that money. I think, I was looking at an article over the weekend as well. And, and a point that was raised is, even if the city does, or found $4 million right now, and, and it would alleviate all the cuts that they're proposing on the school side, are we back in the same situation next year? Is this sustainable on, on the school side? If that $4 million fell out of the sky from, into our laps right now, and we handed it over, are we getting the threats of those kind of same layoffs the next fiscal year? And, and the next fiscal year? And I think that's something that a real conversation has to be had. Is, is the budget sustainable on the school side? Are they throwing these potential cuts on the city side? And because it's kind of an out? I don't know. But what I do know is, what we're trying to balance is our priority, our responsibility. And that's the facilities, as the manager mentioned. Making sure it's hot, it's cold when it needs to be, it's clean, it passes health inspections, the floors, the ceilings aren't damaged, there's not water stains, the controls are working, there's not water main breaks, I mean, pipe bursts in, in the winter. All of these things are our main responsibility, because none of the stuff that goes on in the classroom could occur if that facility's in shambles. And so I think this is, is a challenging time, and I do appreciate the different options that you've laid out for my colleagues and I. And I thank you for putting the work together to at least lay out there what, what recommendations or what options we have them all over. Thank you.
Council Getchy?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. A week ago, the council sat here and asked that the manager have a sit-down meeting with Mr. Skinner. And I think that's fair. I think that you need to sit down with him and see what the balance is. The balance is not $4 million. We're hoping that this administration can come back and find some kind of medium that we're going to have the superintendent stand up here and do that. To wait to July 1st would be a major mistake, because you have to give employees layoff notices, because you don't know, there's no guarantee. And the funding is not there July 2nd. So they would get layoff notices. So your good employees who are extremely capable are going to go look for jobs. And then we're going to, the kids lose again. The net school spending piece, we all know, is a fluff number going back and forth. Everybody, you can say it, you can shake your head, but I see the buildings in, in the disrepair that they're in, and they were charged for maintenance fees, and they were not done. Not one heater in there, glycol was changed in, or the filters, for years, for years. You got paid, we didn't do it. You could shake your head, but it's the truth. And there's many other things over there that were not taken care of for many years that the schools paid for under net school spending. There's many things that were paid for that were not maintained. And, you know, again, I'm not saying it's your administration's fault. And I understand, Mr. Gold, Mr. Baldwin, that you just go about what they give you for a number, and that's the way it works. How many hours, and everything goes like, there's a computer spit out of it. The school department has been overly fair to us. St. John Dock was not only about bringing a school there, but it was also about saving a neighborhood. Mayor Ruck was with me on that piece. We were trying to keep that neighborhood intact, and put a school back there so that people could have a quality of life over there. They came up and gave us the money. When we talk about partners, we had no problem talking about the Lowell Housing Authority and throwing them over $1.7 million. Mr. Golden, we need you to get to Superintendent Skinner tomorrow, sit down face-to-face, figure it out, and get him up here and say, we can live with this. There has to be a way before July 1st that we can do this. We implore you to do this. I understand what after-school means to a lot of kids in this city. And when you look at those cuts, and you look at these kids, it's a deep cut in what people do. Kids don't go out of their house when they go home anymore. And if they do, they're out pulling wheelies in the middle of the road, blocking traffic, when we can have them doing things around productive people. And I just implore you to sit down at the table, come back face-to-face, and say, here we are, here we are. There has to be a way to do this. So I thank you again for your time. Hopefully tomorrow, you and Superintendent Skinner can sit down face-to-face and go over this budget stuff and try to figure this out for the, the people in our city.
Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baldwin, but what is the tuition per student right now? About $13,000, $14,000 per student?
Mr. Mayor? I don't have the numbers in front of me, Counselor, I apologize, but I want to say somewhere between $14,000 or $15,000 per student.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong in this statement. If a student who starts the school year off at the charter school leaves on the 19th of October and comes to the Lowell Public Schools, that money stays with the charter school for the remainder of that school year. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, that October 1, which is the enrollment reporting deadline for charter and public schools, is, is the threshold for that funding.
And vice versa, Lowell-
Just as you stated, Counselor.
I'm wondering how many students from the charter school, because in my years at the school, at school department, the number of students from the charter school going back to Lowell Public Schools was quite high. And- back to Lowell Public Schools was quite high, and so take that student times, how many students times $15,000, that's a huge chunk of money. And I'm wondering if we can, um, through you, City Manager, I, that just can't be fair. I mean, there's got to be a change somewhere through the, through the state legislature that all of that money that now Lowell will be taking on for 140 out of the 180 days is, is gone. So I, and I, when I looked at that charter school number, I'm saying that's got to be part of that, uh, money that we're paying. So that's a concern of mine, um, and I saw Ms. Scott put her hand up, so she might have some information over there. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, I do have a little information, but the only thing that you could do, I think, is to have at the state level, there's different states use, they don't just use the one cutoff date, October 1st, they have more like, you know, a rolling count or an average, like quarterly count or something. So that's something, I think, for the school committee to look at. Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I appreciate everybody's, uh, opinion and concerns on the matter, but one of the things they asked for last week before our school budget meeting was the new positions that have been hired, not filled, but new positions that have been created in the past five years. Uh, and the school department had 254 new positions, right? Which, again, is dear for some point in time. It's an average of 40 or 50 new positions each year. In the same timeframe, the city has hired 19 new positions. So, you know, we have to have some sort of focus on, on spending. Uh, we have gone through the budget, some of it, uh, we have made some cuts, and we have asked that those, um, layoff positions have been put into a suspense account to see when the money does come back. Um, we have asked that the money that we have cut from the budget, that's non-personnel, be used towards personnel, uh, so the superintendent has responded with that to us as well, that will be addressed tomorrow night, but at the same time, you know, you can't, Councilor Getchea, your head would have exploded if you saw that report last week, you know, you know, honest to God, I mean, it just, it was, I thought you when I got it back, you know? So, um, at some point in time, um, the, you know, and I serve on both boards, I see, you know, the school committee, I don't blame him or the superintendent or the school committee at all for advocating for their department, because that's what they are, their department. If we had the fire chief or the police department, uh, the police superintendent in here with 100 cops or 50 firefighters advocating for the same thing, we'd be probably in the same position. So, um, it's very difficult at this point in time, but at some point in time, and this has been happening over the years, um, with the situation over there, and we want to give the kids everything that they could possibly have, but at some point in time, we have to also show some restraint. Councilor Noon?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thanks the managers and his team for laying out some of the ideas in this, the school budget here, and I appreciated his, um, came out and expressed that the in-person meeting with the superintendent will happen. Um, and I, I believe that if you look at the school budget and line item, uh, there's a number of line item I believe that you can cut, uh, or you can short it. Um, I, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm, you know, I can see you have cafeteria service, you have MIS, uh, you have, those just are true, and there's, uh, the switch in curriculum from ELA, uh, that, Mr. Mayor, the school committee hasn't voted on yet. Assuming that tomorrow, uh, school committee meeting, the school committee vote on it, you know, it'd take a while to order booked and stuff like that, may not be in time for next year. So those have to be taken into consideration in discussing. It's a difficult discussion, uh, that, that, that superintendent, uh, will have to have with the, the manager, vice versa. Uh, at the end of the day, I know that we will come up with something, uh, you know, and, and I wish that, um, also, I wish that the, um, the PAC will reconsider, uh, or give us something, uh, so that, because a good partner come together in time of crisis. Uh, they are a good partner, you know, the, the public, uh, employee, uh, committee, and it's the school, the union who's in charge of it. So I urge that, I know, that, 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 that the PAC committee would reconsider us or at least give something, uh, as a good partner will do. Thank you.
Councilor Getchea?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I don't disagree with you, but the comparison of the city side hiring and the school side hiring is a very unfair placed, uh, question. When one has, you know, when you talk about low-income communities, and we talked about this last week, that we're 13th lowest from the bottom in communities, there are challenges on the education system when you bring in that, that other places don't see, and they need certain hires, and that, and DESI requires it, and that's why the hires are different. A municipal side is so different in the hiring process, and I've been lucky to work on both sides and watch how, you know, social, emotional specialists have to be hired. If someone has an issue and, um, DCF has to come in, there's issues, and you know that from the court system, um, and how those kids don't really get thrown out of Lowell, they actually have to stay in Lowell, and people have to educate them. So that's where the questions come in, when you're looking at the hiring process. So to be fair, if we're going to look at hiring processes, like, you know, we have to look at the laws that they have to fall under too. And I'm not saying it's perfect, Mr. Mayor, at all, at all. What, what I'm saying is, we need a conversation, sit down with your knowledge and the manager's knowledge, and sit down and have the superintendent all in a room and say, "Okay, here we are, what can we do to make this work?"
Yeah, you know, and Councilor Robinson's point he made earlier, which I think mostly Counselor, I think we all agree on, is the sustainability of, of this, you know, so if it's $4 million this year, is it $6 next year, is it $8? So that's where, you know, sooner or later, we have to get to a point to where we know that we can, you know, sustain the education for the kids at a certain price tag.
Well, I'm hoping with all the hard work that you and the manager and the rest of this team has put together, and we look at all of this economic development in the city, and we're seeing the growth, that we see the tax revenue come in that will support our school system.
Excellent point. Councilor Belanger?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Mr. Manager, thank you and your administration, uh, for this report, very well detailed, and I could see you really looking under the cushions, so to speak, to see what we can find here. You're exploring every avenue possible. Um, and you know, this, uh, comes from what this council has asked of you this year, that the homeowners need a reprieve. Uh, they've been hit very hard the last two, three years, um, with all, with all that debt service, and that's only going to increase with the high school reaching its top potential next year, with the debt service going at its maximum online in FY '27. Um, so there are definitely, uh, some, some stormy weather ahead, but you have held the line, as we asked you to do, to the taxpayers, um, and I've been through about 70% of the budget, there's really, um, not, not too far to go for what I've seen thus far. But the shortfall here we're talking about is about $4 million, but in my estimation, from my research tells me 1.7 of that is in the classroom. And, you know, as I said last week, in a, a city such as Lowell, where low-income cities, education is paramount. Um, so in my estimation, this is about one, we're talking about 1.7 million here, so there are no jobs lost, and there are no jobs in the classroom, unless anything has changed in the last couple of days. I don't know. But I think what we do, what the manager alluded to, we take a deep breath, it will work out. There is a supplemental budget and a legislation, which I alluded to last week, it sort of got dismissed because of the timing before July 1st. I, I understand all that, but it's happened before. We've received money after July 1st before, and in this, and I'm confident, uh, it will happen again. And all that will go to the school side to make up for this. Uh, if we, if it doesn't reach that potential, well, then we'll take a good look on our side of the house. But I ask, uh, both sides, say the coin, both on the school department and our side, which we've already asked, the administration does everything we asked of them, that we all need to tighten our belts here. The, the days of federal infusions, whether it's S.A. money on the school side, uh, A.P.A. money on the city side are gone. As a matter of fact, it may be the other way around, where cuts are looming. So, um, we appreciate education and everything they do for us, absolutely, but we have some tough times ahead, and we ask that everybody dot their i's and cross their t's going forward. And, Mr. Manager, that's why we pay you the big bucks, find a way, work with the school department, uh, and again, I think with the delegation working, uh, into the coming weeks, I think we want to get it done, I really do. I'm very confident, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to mention, because I know Councilor Getchea had brought up, you know, the, the need for funding within the schools, and obviously, there, there is a lot of need within Lowell Public Schools, there's no denying that. That is why the Student Opportunity Act funding had passed. Um, it was supposed to make right, uh, poor cities like Lowell, other gateway cities, um, we're finding it very difficult to even meet, if you look through last year's budget, most of the other gateway cities did not even meet the floor, the, the minimum net school spending, like Lowell did. We surpassed it by $5 million, which was a, an incredible, if, thing for someone that was a former school committee member, because we fought just to get to the floor all the time. Um, so the, the Student Opportunity Act was supposed to fill that gap, to make cities like Lowell, you know, comparable to other towns that fund, some Cambridge, I mean, I think it was 300% their schools over net school spending requirement. Um, but it was, like I said, to make up for cities like Lowell that cannot do much more than the, the floor. I do hope it stalled, I guess, because of inflation, that the Student Opportunity Act funding didn't come through at its full, you know, amount that it was supposed to. So I hope in the future, that does help the Lowell Public Schools, uh, but we do have a lot of competing interests, and I think we're in a very challenging situation. I, of course, would like to see us do more, whatever we can do, um, but we also cannot rob Peter to pay Paul like we've been doing, and not maintain the schools. You know, I'm tempted to say, "Let's cut that maintenance funding that we're talking about contributing for $1 million." It's tempting, they, they want the cash funding, but I don't think it makes sense. So I appreciate everything that you've done trying to come up with a solution for this.
The motion to accept the place on file communications and official reports to the city manager by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Dakota, also fiercely, I propose motion passes. 6.3, uh, communication, city manager request out of state travel, Lowell Police Department, uh, and one parking. A motion to adopt by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Getchea. Lowell, call Mr. Clark.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Uh, Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Seven votes for the city manager, we'll take 7.2 first. We have someone here that wants to speak on it, by Council Janess, seconded by Councilor Getchea, also fiercely, I propose motion passes. 7.2, a vote to approve a tie agreement, New England Heritage Properties, uh, weigh the fore reading and second reading by title. Uh, motion to adopt by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Yem. Mr. Bush, go ahead. Mr. Manager, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counselors, I just wanted to introduce Mr. Jeff Bush from Heritage Properties. We've had these discussions, and I know that, uh, he's got a couple of things that he wants to share with us, uh, in regards to a development that's happening, in regards to number seven, uh, 7.2. It's, um, right over on Middlesex Street, and, uh, we are looking at the tax incremental exemption that has been discussed. Uh, this is, uh, right on the corner of Middlesex and Pearl Street, uh, just giving Mr. Bush an opportunity to set up. Uh, this opportunity is the tie opportunity, which should be a brand-new construction building over on Middlesex Street, and I think I'm going to let, uh, Mr. Bush talk about this, but I'm pretty sure it's steady, 37 market-rate units. Uh, Mr. Bush, if you have a few opportunities, I know the council, he has brought some handouts for the councils as well to discuss. Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for all you do for the city of Lowell. My name is Jeff Bush, I'm the president of Heritage Properties. We're a family-run business here in the city of Lowell, proud to be here in the city for 47 years. Uh, we were founded in 1978 by my grandfather, um, and I'm here tonight, as, uh, Mr. Manager mentioned, to ask for your support on a tie agreement that's been proposed for our project called the Emery, shown here, uh, and in the packets you were handed, at 218 Middlesex Street, uh, in downtown Lowell in the Jam District. Just a little bit more about us, so we are a property management and development company. We focus on apartment buildings primarily. Uh, we've been in the city for 47 years, like I said. We operate at 11 different locations with 23 buildings and almost 600 units of housing here in Lowell. We've been involved in a number of development and redevelopment projects over the years, so Mahler's Lofts was a redevelopment on Middle Street. We redeveloped our office, which was the former Owl Stamp Building on Middle Street, and then the Waterhead Mill, uh, which was formerly Ramallo's West End Gym on Lawrence Street in South Lowell. Uh, like I said, I'm very proud to be, uh, working here in the city and to have been here for so long. This project, as the manager indicated, is a ground-up development of a vacant parcel on Middlesex Street that's proposed to be 37 units of housing, a mix of studios, one-bed and two-bedroom apartments. We've received our approvals from the Planning Board and Historic Board, as well as an allocation of H-DIP tax credits from the state EOHLC office, um, and at this point, our intent is to begin construction this summer, with completion anticipated in the fall or early winter of next year. Um, and again, we're asking for your support, uh, on the, the approval of this tie agreement as proposed, and I would also like to just thank the city administration for their help in this project, the Planning Department, Giovanni Fran, as well as Ally Carter at Economic Development have been massively helpful to us in getting this project to become a reality. So I'm happy to take questions or any comments, concerns.
Council Yem?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through Mr. Bush, I just want to commend you for stepping up, uh, to fill the need for additional housing in particularly, uh, in the city of Lowell, and particularly in the, uh, parcel that you are developing. Is it challenging for anyone else, but, you know, you've been in Lowell for that many years, and I personally support the idea when the manager presented it, uh, to us, and I think it's a great opportunity, and for me, uh, as a chair of the Housing Subcommittee, appreciate that and thank you. Uh, in my previous life, I developed, redeveloped a building down the street from you, uh, next to Washington Savings Bank, number 60, Middlesex Street. It's a historical, uh, building, convert that into a 24 affordable housing rental, uh, for low-income families as well. So I understand the challenge, I understand the hard work, but I, again, appreciate your family, yourself, committed to the city of Lowell, and to provide additional housing needed, uh, for the, for the city of Lowell. Thank you again.
Council Noon and Council Janess. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bush. Thank you, um, uh, thank you for all your work in the city of Lowell, and vice in the city of Lowell, and particularly this area, it's a tough area, and you are a brave soul. Um, I wish you, uh, I wish you luck in, in this. Uh, just questions to the managers. Mr. Managers, do you have any, what's your position on it? Would you advocate for it, and why?
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Uh, councils, I think this is a great idea. I think it's really breathing, uh, fresh air and new life into the area, Middlesex Street. Uh, you may know this area right now as, it used to be a farm, or a farming area, uh, right on the corner of Pearl Street and Middlesex Street, and, uh, we absolutely need the housing, and the fact that it's market-rate housing, we have some other market-rate developments that are going on over there currently right now, and I think it's a, it's going to be a great opportunity for us to, uh, reinvigorate and reinvent that area of the city.
I have, uh, Councilor, Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, thank you to Mr. Bush for being here tonight and, uh, and presenting us with your plans. Um, I think this is, this is a good step in this direct, in the right direction for this neighborhood, and as, as others have mentioned, you know, it's, it's an empty lot now. It was a farm, but it hasn't been a farm for a little while now, and, you know, I know sometimes people are nervous about tax incentives and, and doing that to foster development, but I think it's important to note that as an empty lot, this isn't generating any tax revenue for the city as it is. So even though this proposed agreement would give a tax break for a little while, even the incremental years between now and the end of the agreement are still going to, uh, generate significantly more tax revenue for the city than it would if this lot remained an empty lot. Um, so I think that's an important thing to note, and I look forward to seeing this project go forward, and I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Right, Council Mercier, still have, uh, Council Getchea and Council Robinson. Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Uh, thank you again. I think everyone's going to say the same thing, but, uh, one question, just what are your thoughts on parking?
That's a good question. So the city changed the zoning so that parking's not required, so we don't have any parking included on-site. There's the Middlesex Street garage that's within, I think, 300 feet, and then another private garage located nearby, so we don't think that, and we had a transportation demand study done as part of our planning board approval, that said that those garages will more than suffice to meet the need for parking here.
Okay, so this falls under the MBTA zoning, is that what we're using for this project?
It, I believe it is in the MBTA zone, but also the DMU changes that were made regarding parking would have also impacted this, so.
Right. It's only up to 10 units, right?
Oh, yes, correct. So MBTA zoning is, the overlay, the MBTA zoning overlay is what prevails when it lays on top of a different zone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for this investment. I know as an employee years ago, I remember when we cleared the overgrowth at the vacant lot over there, and never did I think there was going to be development from the looks of that area. And we're starting to see slowly but surely that area improve, and it's desperately needed. I know it might not be a popular thing, but as I always said, any community, it's a balancing act, it's a scale. If you tip too heavy towards subsidized and affordable and lower income, it's at the expense of small business and economic growth and development because there's lack of disposable. I thank you for bringing market rate into this area to help balance that scale. This is right smack dab in the middle of our commuter rail station and our downtown central business district with the courthouse there. So by injecting disposable income in this area that's in desperate need of it, it gives our small businesses a fighting chance. It gives the economic growth and development opportunities a fighting chance. And it's our own, pretty much, version of a link, because it's linking our business district to our commuter rail station. We have some great businesses that are thriving right next door to the train station. We have a couple of great businesses that are thriving, like the deli, right maybe 20 feet away from where you're developing. I know they'll be very appreciative. And so I think to see more mixed projects come across the floor, it's great. Yes, we do need some affordable, but I think in this area, we're heavier on, we need more market to offset what we currently have, and it's greatly appreciated, and thank you for your investment.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, I just want to let the people know at home why I support this, because it's not like you don't believe in Lowell, you certainly do. Your family has been in business since 1978. You have 20 full-time employees. You own and manage property in Lowell in 11 locations. You have 23 buildings, 592 units of housing, and this is 37 more. So how could I not support someone that believes in Lowell? So thank you very much, and that is a beautiful building. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getche?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck? Yes. 7.1, back to 7.1, a vote to accept expand FY '25 earmark funds, we have the four reading and second reading by title, motion to adopt by Council Yem, second by Council Robinson, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
If I may say a few words before the vote, sir, I would, would request that the manager will allocate the earmark portion for the acre to help build the bathroom at the North Common, because I know Appa money only for renovating the North Common Park, but there's no bathroom. So if we can allocate this earmark toward the bathroom, that would be great for the players who play there on a regular basis during the summertime. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Manager Golden.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I'm going to support both of these votes. I just have a quick question through you, Mr. Mayor, to maybe the CFO or the city manager. I noticed with the transfer for the cemetery commission, the cemetery commission agreed out of perpetual.
We didn't get there yet, we're just, we, we, we're running out of time, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
So back to 7.1, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getche?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
7.3, a vote to authorize city manager execute lease agreement with the Daily Corporation LLC, we have the four reading and second reading by title, and motion to adopt by Council Dakota, second by Council Scott. Roll call.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getche?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
11 years.
7.4, transfer of $31,329.72 to the cemetery department, we have the four reading and second reading by title, motion to adopt by Council Getche, second by Council Chow, Council Robinson.
Thank you. Through you to the manager or CFO. I'm glad to see that, that, you know, we are keeping up with some of the needs of this department. I did notice that part of the reason we're voting for this transfer is because it stated there is no account established for the cemetery. So it's being transferred into the Parks Department account, I believe, to make this purchase. Whereas the amount of equipment that they have down the cemetery, and kind of like the flow chart, organizational chart that's currently in place, would it make sense in the future to maybe establish an account for the cemetery division? Because if the money's coming from perpetual care, and specifically, that's, that's kind of carved out and earmarked as to what those uses can be of those funds. If we're going to be purchasing, say, things like backhoes and trucks and the flooring mats that cover them to be able to dig the graves, all those kind of things, would it make sense in the future to create an account for, specifically for the cemetery? So when the perpetual care votes are taken, it's transferred right in, and then they're able to purchase through an equipment that way.
Mr. CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, that's not a problem. You know, within the DPW, there is flexibility to transfer the organizational code, and this is, the transfer form was prepared by the cemetery department, so they must have noticed that there wasn't an equipment line that they could use to populate with the $10,000, and so they, they asked to use the Parks, the Parks one. But to establish a new org and object code for them is no big deal at all, and, you know, the auditor's here with us tonight, I think we can just, we can just do that, so that it sits, because you'll notice on the transfer form, the ones with the 049, that's the organizational code for the cemetery. 0650 is for the parks. And so we can, as long as it's okay with the council, we can just set up a new org and object combination for the cemeteries. That's no problem at all. We could just do that now.
Okay, thank you, because I noticed the line, "We're requesting the funds for the truck be transferred to the Parks miscellaneous equipment account as the cemetery department does not have a vehicle account." And again, I know that that is a primary function of their duties, is utilizing the vehicles that they use, as well as the backhoe and equipment. So I mean, if they don't have the account, maybe it just makes sense to do it, so now everything is kind of clear and transparent.
Absolutely, and we do have record in Munis, our accounting system of, you know, to, to trace back that this would have been a transfer from perpetual care, so we can make sure that it's used for the appropriate use. Because as you mentioned, this is coming from the interest on the perpetual care trust, which can only be used for certain cemetery expenditures. All of that, you know, a copy of the vote gets loaded into Munis, so we have all that record there, so that it couldn't be used for anything else. But setting up a new combination in the Munis system is no problem, and we'll do that, Counselor.
Excellent, thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getche?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
11 years.
Eight orders to the city manager, 8.1, orders to amend zoning, extension SMU Zone 1190, Sycamore Boulevard. And you also have an amended zoning TMU Zone, Branch Street. Give the first readings and the motions to refer both to an August 12 public hearing by Council Yen, second by Council Noon, also fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 9, report, subcommittee, 9.1, nonprofit organization, subcommittee, May 13, 2025, Chairman Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. The nonprofit organization's subcommittee met on May 13, 2025, in the city council chambers at 5:30 PM. Members present were Council Noon, Council Mercier, Council Robinson, and myself. Also present were Red Cross, Northeastern Chapter Executive Director Kyle McWilliams-Lopez and St. Michael's School Principal Gabriella Tuanavane. The Red Cross was the first to present. The executive director Lopez highlighted the need for volunteers, outlining 90% of the workforce was volunteers. The Red Cross provides disaster relief, mental health services, shelter, emergency supplies, CPR training, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and training for all ages. They have prepared with Pedro for four- to seven-year-olds, be Red Cross ready for 12-plus, hands-on CPR for 16-plus, and more. Executive Director Lopez explained there are twice as many major disasters than 10 years ago. In Lowell, there have been 104 fires they reported to in the last five years, and 13 in FY '25 so far. Lowell has the highest rate of fires in their region. In closing, executive director Lopez asked that we share the need for volunteers to keep the programs alive and moving in the direction they are. And his contact information is his phone number is 617-467-8859, and his email is Next up was St. Michael's School Principal Gabriella Tuanavane. Ms. Tuanavane outlined St. Mike's is a pre-K through eighth-grade school that offers an excellent education, before and after-school programs, community service, athletics, and more. St. Mike's is offering a summer camp from June 16 to August 22, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM for children preschool through fifth grade. They can be reached at 978-453-9511. If you would like to take a tour of St. Mike's school, it can be scheduled by calling 978-453-9511, or emailing admissions at st-mikes, I mean, saint-michaels.com. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to report, the report of progress by Council Getche, second by Council Dakota, also fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 10 petitions, 10.1, a claim for one property damage, motion to refer to law department for apartment renovation by Council Mercier, second by Council Belanger, also fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 10.2 miscellaneous, Cliff Kincaid, Cliff Whalen, the owner, requests installation of a handicap pocket side at 28 Coburn Street. Motion to refer to transportation engineer for apartment renovation by Council Robinson, second by Council Yem, also fair say aye, opposed motion passes. And 10.3 miscellaneous, Deborah Smith, requests installation of a handicap pocket side at 9 Lumbergh Street. Motion to refer to transportation engineer for apartment renovation by Council Scott, second by Council Dakota, also fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 11 announcements?
Yes.
Council Mercier and Council Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to alert the public and my colleagues that this Thursday, May 22, at 1 o'clock, we'll have a senior citizen subcommittee, and we're taking it on the road, and we take it to the senior center to discuss senior recreational playground. That was the motion of Council Corey Robinson, and community issues regarding seniors, not necessarily regarding the senior center, but issues in your neighborhood with the seniors. Thank you.
There you go, Council, Council Robinson?
Thank you.